I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Any additions or corrections to the minutes of our August 24 meeting? Is there a motion to approve by Johnston? Is there a second? Any discussion? All in favor signify that I say aye. Good morning, Reverend.
Good morning.
Good, how are you? What can we do for you today?
Well, so I wanted to come talk to you about that since I'm not on your end of budget season. I don't know if anyone else is going to bid or just going to contract or contract to that. But I wanted to talk to you a little bit about it.
Okay.
From my side. The crime rate has increased. The last season I haven't really been covering it. My expenses are much higher now that I am an employee full time. My expenses are approximately $4,000 a month, give or take, for the employee. And unfortunately, because of the heavy case load, I can't take private clients like was happening at the as if a full-time gig for me. The days that, I mean, I take maybe one or two private clients, but I can't really take private clients that would substantially increase costs, costs or income or losses. So my cover is going to be higher this year. And I just want to let you know and talk about it. The number that I'm looking at is 132.
Art's still not under a two-year contract?
It's up in December.
Is he?
It is.
Oh, where did that time go?
That goes fast. Just like money, it snaps.
You're currently at 180,000?
Yeah, so we're at 132. That would leave enough on the loan. Because, for instance, right now I get $9,000 a month, $4,000, those sorts of expenses. $5,000 is left from that before income tax. I'm looking for retirement savings. But the caseload and the inability to make outside income, I came up with this number. People were telling me I should ask for more than what I actually think I'm worth, but I don't.
Aren't we all?
But I'm not, I'm not, I'm not that expensive. We negotiated down or whatever, but how does that rank in?
Did he give us?
132 is what he liked to be at.
Where are you currently at again? I missed that.
So I know that that's a $24,000 increase, so I wanted to come speak to you before anything, before you approved your budgets or looked at things or anything like that. I don't know if anybody else is going to be bidding, in the past it hasn't been. I don't know if you want to just keep me on a contract. At 132, I'm also willing to offer a three-year contract. So, so, I have a, if one goes fast, and you'll know for at least three years. And I don't imagine that, well, I can't imagine, because I don't know what's going to happen in three years. But at least it'll be, you know what the budget for like the next few years. Well, with the caseload and with everything that, that requires, it's pretty much a full-time.
Well, I think.
It is a full-time job. And, and I worship one, but unfortunately it's become more and more and more, more a full-time job. I have, I have an employee, he works wonderful, he's really great, he's not cheap, but he's great. Nine years of correctional officer for the tribe, tribal member. He knows the character before I knew them, they also even fill me in on the stuff if I don't know them. After six years, I've gotten the mojo to have everybody in generations of families. But he provides good source. I think that Bill and then disagree. I did along well with Bill and work, worked well with Bill and all the court staff, know everybody. So, at least from my point of view, I do believe that. I wanted to at least break it to you before your budget and bidding process goes, depending on what I'm looking at.
Just, just a couple of questions and maybe there are more comments that you can't answer, but are, do you make yourself available 24/7 if need be, where a call would come in at any hour of the night?
Uh, well, if there was an emergency, yeah, I'm available. I mean, if there's an emergency, I'm available unless I don't have my cellphone on me for some reason. Like there was one a couple of weeks ago.
The medical, the medical thing?
Yeah, the medical thing. And I just didn't have my cellphone on me at that time, so otherwise I'm available. And I'm available in meetings as well. I know that Bill and I sometimes talk after five o'clock. I try to avoid working Saturdays, but I end up being at home, just to keep my, you know, stay away from the office and just do that. So, yes.
Second, second thing I'd like to inquire about, if, if we do go along with the new budget, the new contract, whatever, are you willing to guarantee a two-person office, which would be you and a full-time person as well?
Absolutely.
Sure.
Mr. DeBois is not looking to go anywhere, and I'm not looking to lose him. And that's part of where I, I'm coming in with the 132 so I can give him a little bit of, you know, a raise, at least cost of living, to keep him on board. I was able to do that this year, but it automatically cuts into it. Doesn't look like a lot of money when you break it out, but then when you look into it for the course of the year and then how much that raises my tax, that I have to pay for employment tax, you know, that's that. So that also, the 132 is also to cover second employee to ensure that he's taken care of. Right now, I don't get any benefits to him. But, you know, in the future, it might be something I want to do or something he would want. Right now, he uses IHS and things like that, so, but, you know, maybe help him out with retirement or something like that.
Sure.
So that's also sort of encompassing that.
You're going to do a three-year contract?
A three-year contract. So Dylan has to put up with me for a year.
It's obvious you've got a good working relationship to keep things moving along. That's appreciated.
No, I mean, the caseload is just getting even heavier. Full-time 24/7 kind of, kind of job. The people at the jail are, I've been able to do it via DDM now. So I want to thank you guys for making this and set up, because it saves me some time on my side, because I can just go up there, DDM with the guys who are in jail and really, it saves a lot of time. Because otherwise you go to jail, you gotta, gotta wait maybe 10, 15 minutes to get back in, then they have to bring people out individually, plus there's, you know, I'm on their turf. And something could go wrong when I have to break bad news. Which I do fairly regularly have to break the bad news.
We talked about the DDM thing a long time ago, and the courts were not in favor until it came around. It came around and the judge said, yeah, we can do that, so.
Yeah, as far as I know, the, the DDM is working well for the court system. So, as far as I know, Dylan's trying to get on that as well. I just wanted to let you know, and I don't know if you're going to open up bids or if you just want to do a contract with me.
What they'll do next week is we'll have a budget hearing, original budget hearing. And then they've got till the end of the month to be able to change the budgets. Because everything's been advertised.
Okay.
So, they really, really can't do anything today, but it's a good thing.
No, I didn't expect anything done today. I just wanted to keep the lines of communication open, let you know.
Appreciate that.
Any other questions? I will let you know.
Thank you.
See you in a couple hours.
Morning, everybody.
Good morning.
I have one comment. I trust that you will get it out. My second comment is, our state's attorney is just as busy as he is, and our state's attorney's salary is about 73, 74,000, apparently paying 180,000.
I guess my, if my two cents is worth anything on that. The 180 to begin doesn't include, doesn't have a separated pay for its assistant where we're going to separate from my salary. And should be told he has to, one of the individuals, which is a lot covered than the type of individual here. Having, he's got the person-to-person contact, which I'd want him handling. It's a lot covered for people.
Not saying that I'm not worth more, but yeah, to stay on.
He had no benefits associated with that either, though. Just a flat salary, and he's paid the rent on that to us, I think.
Plus, it's a contract.
Plus, he gives me over twelve a contract at times.
Those class C, is that what it was?
Which is, which when the proposal was rare and it's been more common.
Yes, yes.
Which. Yeah, we talked about two years.
You know, through the, through the years, we, I don't know how many years ago, the commissioner did a pay with the public, defend their contract, and then did with the, just all court-appointed attorneys. So, depends on, I mean, the court-appointed attorney prices are going up too, so.
I think when we, when we made that change from court-appointed to a contract, I think we were the impression we're saving money. Maybe we really didn't, but I think, I think that was the intention to try to save money. The first year we probably didn't have that.
Well, I still think we would be.
I would.
Might be, are too.
The amount of cases that Robert handles, he gets, I would say, a straw, maybe by the 90% of the cases that come through.
Boy, and I think too, I mean, he's in tune with, and his old words is that, what do they call them? The characters of whatever it was, so someone outside might get played a little bit and work a little bit harder before he realizes he's being played.
And I wouldn't, like, I mean, I do have a very good working relationship. And the incident last week with medical emergency, that is the only time where I haven't been able to get a hold of after hours with something going on. I'd have been able to reach you on different occasions.
So you have, uh, what do you?
What's the going rate for a paralegal assistant? I'd imagine that's less than 40.
I wouldn't say that.
Put you on the high side, or what?
No, for an actual paralegal, you're probably looking at 50.
He said he was paying his guy 4K a month, that's 48 grand.
No, yeah.
His, oh, his assistant is easy, is he a paralegal or not really, or?
Well.
Kind of like?
Yeah, I, I, they're not quite paralegal, but not just secretary or staff. As far as stuff from my office, I don't have anything. So why don't I put on a manager tied up with the law school for the deputy position here if I have applicants? If I do have a commission at law school, I can hand it down to Elliot along with the Friday. I should know soon tomorrow or Thursday if I have any, if there are law students applying.
So it's third year that he has to continue for a fourth year before they feel like they want to come back to work, or?
So it would be like a situation with me where you hired me, I think, technically hired me either February or March, but I wasn't here until August. I mean.
I'll see what the difference is.
I'll, I'll leave it up to the student whether they want to come in and start working right after they graduate while they're studying for the bar. I personally didn't want to. I wanted to focus on the bar exam, I'll leave that up to them. There, that's the situation. And then we have a hearing, and then I guess it's the last week hearing, I look at the motion appeal on the night. And I'm just wondering. Our motion to dismiss. Is the marijuana ordinance today or next week?
Next week.
Next week. Other than that, do you guys have any questions for me?
You've seen that, we're trying to do something out there, you brought my tire attention last week, you know, trying to do something to help keep employees. Trying to get something going.
No, that's, that's good. I guess I don't know the specifics, I've heard anything, but it's something that's, we're going to be going forward.
Is there any reason that we should be present for that hearing on the night? I think you guys sat in on the last one.
No, you guys don't need to either. We're handling it via the affidavits that.
Sure.
Kevy, if you guys have something.
Sure, okay. Very good.
I need Dylan to copy that letter we have received.
Oh, okay, I'm going to have a chance to read that.
I'm assuming it's the same layer. I think someone might need to correct him on that letter of what Sheriff's name is.
Yeah.
Yeah, I read that.
Markey Merk. I think you've pulled the guard, I thought. I think we, I'd like to call and find out specifically what they're talking about, or what they want to talk about.
I think I would like to see that forward. What's going on before we even bite into it. I mean, I don't want to go off the line, so. Excuse me.
And just remember, if you do go, we'll have to notice that hearing, because it's inviting all of you, so more than one of you go, we'll have to notice that hearing, the commission will be there.
Put it on the agenda?
No, you'll have to post notice that there'll be a form of the commissioners at place for some sort of petition, I think.
Only if we had three or more, right?
Yeah, there's a form present there. I just noticed that the letter is inviting the entire commission, so. Just to heads up with that.
So you, so we just can't put it on the agenda for next week, is what you're saying? We have to.
I guess sometime I'd like to give them a call after the meeting.
Yeah, then, or, you know, after the meeting here, whenever, you'd be reconvening at 3, whenever, at the assuming it's State Headquarters, Travel Headquarters.
But then I don't have to go, do I? Well.
It has to do with law, unfortunately.
I'll get back to you on that.
Well, but take minutes.
Well, for our more than two people.
Yeah, if, if there's more than three of them there, like, probably.
I would go with it, it's in my, my district, so I'll, I'll.
Any else for me this morning?
No, sir.
All right.
Thank you, Dylan.
Um, Dylan and Van Warren will not be attending today, they're going to reschedule.
Is that right?
Due to sickness, Pat's not coming in today either.
That's the oh my.
Maybe you want to get a lot of water and lots, and he wants to come in early.
I got a meeting on 9:45, I gotta be.
Breakfast doesn't count.
That's not a meeting.
We're at four pieces now.
I, I did meet Warren, Dylan brought her up on Friday. Very, very nice young lady.
Where'd she come from?
She lives over by Lake City.
Oh.
She's not from here, her boyfriend here is from the Lake City area. I did get in, get the, by August 31st, which is today, we had to have, we had to send in a report on that, that money that we got that we can't spend. So I did get in, and it's kind of a, I had help with some of the terms that I've done, so. I think, I think it'll be a smooth process after that, but I did, I, it didn't take that long, I would just kind of, like, whenever you're dealing with.
Thanks for money, please tell me how I can spend it, hey, as a fee.
I guess that's just everybody trying to compare stuff, and I just thought, man, I don't mean nothing by it, that is, it's not embarrassing, but.
Any comments or inquiries on that?
I haven't heard any, they just got it yesterday.
Did you send more around or something, or?
Yeah, whatever that memo that, that was on that piece of paper. I had sent, so there was two memos that went. For the full-time employees and the full-time part-time employees, we sent the memo out that we'll, we'll get another one in November. And then, yeah, for the part-time, like, summer help, we just did, here's a, here's a bonus. And I didn't say anything about, about November one. Like, for the summer time help down in the accessory office.
Oh, sure.
They're not going to have a paycheck, I don't know, it's up to you guys.
The same thing.
And it'll be, you know.
I agree with that, I mean.
Oh, a one-time deal for them, do you think?
Well, it's, I guess, that's totally up to you guys.
Yeah, but that's what, I think that makes sense.
Is that, okay, so I gave you a new copy of the one, the one that I gave you, Don, and can I have that back? Or do you guys need copies of the memo?
This is the new one.
That's the old one?
You want the old one? Oh, that's the one you said.
Maybe one line, I don't, I don't need a copy.
Yeah. Oh, took the next one. The part-time got a different one. There's two of them, there, one was. Tim, don't forget to say goodbye, he's probably.
That makes you look every time.
He has a back to us the whole time.
He was up to the past and went and dig your outdoors and that front end, and then all of a sudden, gee.
Where was this at?
The munches up in Biller, where we stationed.
Yeah, there was some earth landing in the area.
Well, the. See, I didn't know that was that.
No, on, on the extension.
Oh, I thought that was.
Pat's not coming, he didn't really have anything to do that.
Do we have something for him, or we'll get him on the speaker?
No.
We need to talk to him.
Next week, we also have the five-year bridge plan hearing.
Okay.
So that'll, that'll also happen next week. So next week will be a busy week.
And then we'll leave the tribal thing as, we have, that's the 13th.
You'll be here next week, yeah.
You're the next week tour?
You know what, I got an update on that. Ladies and gentlemen, due to the COVID increase, in cases I have canceled out of state convention.
We did, okay.
I'm not going to wrap it.
I was just going to ask you, he's there.
Yeah, that's, we've been watching my wife more than I have, but Pennington and Neat County have just skydived out.
As a result of.
I don't think it had a lot to do with it.
It was awful, I don't know if it was just seven or seven.
How's he feeling?
Are you glad to get back home? It's good and all.
They didn't detain him more than a week. No, but I called on just in time to get a refund back on the registration.
Yeah, I sent, I, um, Chris.
Okay.
We have Pat and, and Mark, we're still on, you know.
Yeah, we've got some stuff there on there. And that would be for Mark and Pat, the, we didn't approve the travel expenses yet. You have a motion to approve for those two? Again, second, by Carson, all in favor, so you can say aye.
They're traveling together.
I kind of doubt it.
They will not be, because Mark has to stay the following, the following morning on the 15th. He has to be there for, they're going over the new system at the treasurer's office. So he's just going to keep all the treasures there for the following morning. And a lot of times Pat arrives with a. And then we have a county auditor workshop for elections, and, and that is October 20th and 21st. And I've reserved room for Christie and Pam to go, so I'd like.
Here, gentlemen, it says 19th and 20th, is it?
Yeah, 19th and 20th.
19th and 20th.
Was that it?
None up here, but I've got some rooms.
Remember, I'm just curious, is it, what else would they cost us, or not that big?
Let's see, I think, well, they say block, a block of rooms, so it counts, state range.
They're higher than two falls.
Actually, I mean, this is people talking, I don't know, I mean, they said, Millman went up, new one, 160 or something, they're talking.
I know, we used to stay at a clubhouse, we go to Fargo, Sioux Falls, and the last time we called, they said, yeah, with Rubens, it's a two-night minimum stay. Oh, by the way, on Friday night, you'll be in this room, on Saturday night, you have to move to another room, it's like that.
Really?
I think we'll go elsewhere, thank you very much. Yeah, two, I don't know if that's a, just a weekend thing, if it's just busy or what, I said, when the disco in effect? Well, you know, recently.
Did they say what the fairies?
I didn't even get that far. When she said two-night minimum stay, I said, I don't think so. Right across from Shields, Fargo?
Oh, Fargo.
Sioux Falls is, well, Sioux Falls is down by Forty-first and Louise.
It's very expensive though, hotel nighters. Country inn and suites in Chatham, has some, it's over two hundred bucks a night. And the American, which is a Wyndham property, was a little over a hundred, it was like a hundred and nine bucks or something.
Really?
A difference. And it was, it was fine. It was fine, I thought. Motion to approve the election workshop for two, by Simple, second, by Miguel. All in favor, signify the saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
There is no registration or anything like that.
Okay. Do you have a new lease agreement?
I, our lease is, is coming up on our, out here in our office. And so Kevin just gave me a bid from Valley Office Systems for a lease. Giving me nine, nine dollars and fifty-six cents more per month. So, for five years, and that's for the color exactly what we have. So, I guess I, I didn't ask for any other ones from any place else. If you want me to, I'd say yeah. But we had, Kevin comes every week and it's just nice to deal with Valley Office.
So, be a new machine.
It's a new machine and it's a Zerox. And it's, and it's just a, a port for now, I don't. Unless you want me to get another one.
I don't have a problem with, with that. A couple of nine dollars a month over five years, that's pretty reasonable.
So, if it needs your approval, then I'll just, then have you, you, you up the lease for us. You wanna see it now? I have the current one, there are two on the back, the current lease.
But your cost per copy is lower, so your overall cost will remain the same.
Yeah.
If your volume increases, it'll actually become less costly to call. Ninety-four. Tom is our printer expert. Okay, good thing. There are motions to approve the new lease. Carlson, second, by Simple, all in favor, signify the saying aye.
The advertisement for the lead person is, is done on the tenth of September, but we already have received one application.
Really?
How many hours?
We've gotten one so far, but we don't close until the tenth.
Okay.
No, I think.
Quality applicant, that's urgent.
Yes.
Send a message to Sheriff Apple, see if he can get in there. As we're moving right along.
Well, see, when we move that meeting in, this past, in February or whatever, one got hung out coming up. If he, if he go along, so you can figure it out.
Well, let's wait till after the tenth and you guys can decide.
All right, I'll do it on Sunday.
We have five, ten applications by now. Did someone want to contact them now at the tribe to see?
Yeah, yeah. We'll see what Tyler has to say. He got the letter?
I just, we're gonna get it to him today when he came.
Okay. We'll discuss it with Tyler. When he gets here, I just sent him a message. He could come anytime. I was visiting with Doug on our heating cooling system next door and Thompson Mechanical was here in June and we just got the bill for his approval, a couple thousand dollars. He had, he had called another company. I had saw a contractor in town from Wheaton doing some heating and cooling work. And I asked him if he'd stop over and visit with Doug about it and say would. Doug wasn't here at the time, so he wrote a message on his wakeboard. Doug called and the guy never called him back. So, we're not having too good a lot of talk together. Getting a contractor even, getting a serious, serious bid on it.
Wait, wait. Why like the company Westone? They do that stuff. Does your like the company here do that kind of stuff?
Otter Tail won't. I don't think they have a, have an, they don't have an in-house, but not saying.
You traverse what it takes on. Yeah, that's.
Do they cross lines at all? Would they, would they come to another territory? But I mean, would they come into a different territory to do, to do?
It's a separate type. I'm sure it's a separate business usually within the company.
You think they would?
Contact for that.
Or Westone, if it does, does, well, if it did ours last one.
You know, Westone? They think they're basketball, they've got a big detail about.
I don't know if they come, seems I'll listen to that too or not.
Oh, yeah, I don't know.
Okay.
Seems I'll listen to that.
Well, that's what he's gonna check with to see if they cross company lines or, if they're working in Otter Tail territory. Otter Tail doesn't get, they must contract.
I'd rather find anyone other than Thompson Mechanical. They're too damn expensive to drive up there. Every time, the two guys in their van, it's like, what, just to drive up to Marne Town and drive back home, and before they do anything in front of like three hundred bucks, you know?
The fan blade, Doug told him, just mail it to me. I'll, I'll put it on. And they, they did. They go about mileage, ten hours.
We need someone other in those days to work on stuff.
That's exactly what I'm telling anybody. It's how much heck you give them because what are you doing? They quit.
Yeah.
How's landfill looking down?
Equipment was just sitting there, moving today, so I, I don't, I think they're pretty close to done. Why, I need to get, add the, add them all. I'm gonna stop voice, voice and just take a look.
What name, thinking why I open my mouth? Maybe you got after once they gone. And one didn't go down much either, for you. Your hands didn't go down much.
That's the end of person's.
Yes, exactly.
I brought some donor polls. They're downstairs. I think they want us to take a, a little donor poll break.
Oh, that are dead. For reference, that here, I don't know. Oh, yeah, dead yet. Dennis?
No.
I don't know. I can respond to that if you want. I'll explain.
If you would like to.
Yeah, because I'll explain.
Let's see, it's from, it's from McCauley, Dennis.
Oh, what happened? Maybe it's there. There it is. Yeah, do you? That, I'll explain that to the PIA. You know, reservation. Just make me, that's great.
Yeah.
Just make me copy, but not this one.
Okay, because I wasn't sure how to respond and I don't really know the work, so.
Guys sent to us, because we had county wants to do that.
Yeah.
Boy, I gotta tell you, we're out at the, the golf course Saturday, no Monday. What the hell we was at? I don't know. Su- Sunday, dinner, a little prime rib sandwich. It's just a dive for. That is just some of the best times I've ever had. Yeah, and I always, I mean, the prime rib's on the menu. I can get it swimming. I got a lot of. Eating a lot of prime rib and that's gotta be some of the best.
Hi, Sherri.
Thanks for the bonus, guys.
You're welcome.
Very much appreciate it.
Good to hear.
Thanks from the, the summer help too, because that's, that's meant to be an awesome program. Um, this is that man for town.
Okay.
Stuff that we did, we had, Matt had you signed with that.
All right, we have to do it, right?
Yeah. Kim Cottontown, and she was doing the paperwork, so. Are you going down to that, Don?
What? Ah, I'm probably not gonna go so far. I think I'll go in the ribbon car, ribbon, ribbon cutting in the afternoon, but I think I could do that. We're just seeing, we have the R S B P by the thirteen, I'll just see what thirteen, she does.
Thanks for catching that.
You good? Good morning. You feeling good?
Yeah.
We weren't at all about that.
What are they giving away free down there today? Donuts, cookies? Uh, wanna vote? She's still talking.
How many people in here want to?
There's three on the.
Nothing is gonna be a pretty good crowd, folks, because boy, they're really handling down now, really. Three nine seven is important, I think. What is important is. I think it's ready on six bucks, yeah.
Is it really?
Is it really, I think.
But come October, they drop down about five or something?
It's drawn now rapidly, right now.
That's what I talked to him earlier.
Soon as Don gets in here, Jim, you can.
No, I'm, I'm.
You can have the floor. We're way, we have.
That's cash price. That's cash price today, right?
This would've been last.
Yeah, I mean, I think, I think harvest time goes down.
Yeah.
See, Lancers had his appetite, two, two for one meals. Last, getting rid of last of their food, huh?
That Jim Sampson, the guy who used to have it before, and he took it again.
Oh, someone goes, was gonna reopen just under a different.
They figured a couple of weeks.
Lancers, it's Barra Restaurant.
Gonna call it Sampson Jim, by the way.
Will not, will not. If, if, every time the, the contract is left to renew, someone else moves in, right?
Yeah.
You're leasing a building, the city owns a building, I think, at least dollars.
How much rain we predicting for this week, sir? One point, what day is that?
There's one day, Thursday.
Morning and noon? Morning and noon?
Yes.
Funny we got it when I was.
And that's a definite maybe.
Did you have like a rainfall total for, did you try like?
Yeah, every day I've got five thousand one hundred and one hundred horsepower. Cause every cloud of rain hail still have work and we use that for our P D M data. So, who's your dad?
Yeah, your daddy.
So, I had eight point six three per coffee.
Wow.
For August, okay. I checked the weather service and they said nineteen, you remember this, nineteen oh four. They had.
Which is young, man.
Nine point two something. So, it wasn't the record for August, but it was, you know.
I bet you, yeah, I bet you, well, we had five in this last deal, a little over five, so I bet you we had a couple. We're pretty close. Where do you know they report dinner?
And three miles west, or east of me and Tom here, I think they had nine point one one.
Were you measuring?
I measured three west.
Well, so all three were up at your house and okay.
What do you, are you?
Yeah. Oh, yeah, you've had about the same amount. That's something else, yeah.
You get a little bit more than you guys.
I'll give him my recent amount. I know you didn't. Don't ask me.
You can't just live across the street and then I get them out.
Well, you know, they're a little more empty by the time they get to him.
You look at the other week, I don't know what day it was, those few just raining, the front house is just pouring down rain. Wait until it rains, yes, and goats hanging off their dry, so looking out the back window, it's never raining at all. The difference between the front house and the back house, the boys were over there, look in the front. Look in the front, he's like, what's going on? I don't know.
I can tell it runs down hill from this house.
We talking plumbing now or we talking on?
So, I just wanted to come briefly to update you on the radios of the board for the county highway program. Um, happens to be building the brackets and going to the vehicles for them. And then they'll get them out and they'll send up three guys from Sioux Falls to do that. Hopefully they'll get it all done in one day. And we should get them off the system. Channel's already set. It's just very.
You'll have a separate channel compared to the story this has been.
He will no longer, and I want to say this from you, he will no longer have a potential liability because of somebody talking over. Unless it's another first responder. It won't be routine non-emergency communications from the county. And we've talked about that when we did the schools, because Rollout School, System School did theirs at the same time. And it just wouldn't have been cost effective back then. Today, it's it's one thing that's gotten a little bit less cost because of the changeover, you know, through the project twenty five. So, it just can run on the same system, but separate channels. I think there's only upside unless they have keys to the mic and doesn't connect with somebody that they thought they used to hear. They'll just have to work through those issues. But once we move forward, you can't go back to where they were. We just can't. It's just too much of a, and maybe I'm overthinking that. It's just, I think it's a liability to come and get something with that. And maybe we just can't. We'd be proactive on that, Jim. Appreciate your work. The other thing that's maybe improved, um, the twenty twenty one travel home, twenty twenty one state home and security program. And we ordered eight radios and that are finally getting shipped. We're not operating microchips in Florida since this whole thing kept. And finally, we've finally got confirmation, the orders have been shipped from the supplier and we should have them here in the next, next two weeks of Oklahoma. So, we're gonna have to, it's a reimbursement program, ready check to the twenty three thousand two oh cents. And Don has that amount who will deal with that when they come, but I'll submit them the paperwork to the state, state reimburses.
Wouldn't they?
Well, we think we're gonna put a couple of them in the supplier trucks of the cities that don't have a whole lot of funding. Where she's gonna get one, Leffington, Rossell. Someone's gonna get one, Corona's, see, things are pretty good shape. I'd like to get that one too, because what this has is the encryption on it. That nobody, if their scanner can really track that channel, because every time they key the mic, it comes up with a different code. So, it's always encrypted and that doesn't allow anybody else to, in a scene where it's a bad situation, you know, mass casualty, mass fatality, uh, whatever, the thing that be talking about being interrupted. So, those will be coming. And I guess that's all I know. Any questions?
One point eight, Wednesday and Thursday.
I think so. We'll be on the lower side. I think for this out, we'll be two. It was supposed to get rain?
And hail, aren't you?
I don't know where the hail even be when it happens. I think the risk, the risk when it comes into like severe weather, they don't think this will be severe like it was previously, you know, like last week. But the threat out there is always for, you know, strong winds.
See a hail way out in Minnesota, I mean, tennis ball, baseball, so it's just.
You know, somebody was.
Grant County did. I know Karen Layer's house, they they lost windows in their house. Damage on camper, horse trailers, all the vehicles that go on site.
This whole thing stayed about three, four, five miles south of the county and then tracked its way to Oklahoma.
Four mile corner right south of.
We had weather scientists out, they were called out pretty early. The other thing going north too, so we just rely on our weather scientists to do that and stay in communication the rest of the day. Again, that's all I have. I'd love to get some other reading.
Appreciate it.
Thank you. Thank you.
The timer.
I know, I have to go back.
Not today.
You have this call. Sent him a text.
I see you had regular donuts down there.
They, I don't see that. Don't see it, don't eat it.
Donuts and?
Somebody's bruising it.
No, Jay's on it. He's our donut man. He used to be, he used to be a cop, you know.
Some attitude hurt a break, huh?
Little answer.
Little answer, can't leave a message.
He must be busy with some.
Must be busy.
Did you notice that that chick on his voicemail is full or something?
Has not been set up, is what this one says.
Kind of like when I used to send your emails to him.
You see it? He said that correctional officer. Sounds like he's complaining, but then we just did.
Yeah.
Posted in the same day that we made the. Made the decision.
I bet she should be exceptionally happy.
Her, her part time living. He's part. I should, I said that. He's not part time, he's old.
I agree with that. I guess I.
Isn't this what it is basically?
Yeah.
Yeah.
You look in the, you look on papers and.
It's, you know. I, I think I totally had some issues with something I ordered online and I was trying to get it resolved and first time I called, this is thirty five minute wait. So then they sent me a text and said, we're working on your due to the vaccine shortly. A week went by, so I called again on a ninety minute wait. Wow. And now I need to give you your phone number and they'll call you back. I was like, I had to sit around and wait all day. I want to go over after something.
I've called the water tower and I still have not gotten a returned call on it.
I wonder if there's ever anybody there. I driven by that building, I don't, I didn't see a car there.
Just answering right now.
Yeah, I didn't see a car there.
Nope.
See, they must have got some brief on the thickness of that paper. It's a little bit thicker than it was a week or so ago. You don't have to pull it apart like this to.
Pretty, pretty skinny.
Oh, it was, it was terrible. I never seen anything that skinny.
Hello, Christie. Ever, ever since Aberdeen bought Water Tower or vice versa, Water Tower's got a lot of.
Well, I'd say this is the last.
Well, they're owned by one big company.
Yeah. What do we did, you know, a lot of things did away with it. I had missed, so, yeah, I just, we just redo it, otherwise I don't think I would have even ended up with this work, just.
I was looking for, I was looking for some football box, or something. Even for Friday night.
Yeah.
It'll be in our Saturday, Sunday.
No.
Monday either.
Oh, really? And they, they never put commodity prices in there anymore?
Whatever, there's no box.
No?
You can go say. This team has so many yard disruptions.
Yeah. Maybe they're so upset with the way the Vikings performed that they didn't want to put it in. Oh, you're talking about high school, oh.
Vikings haven't performed, I don't think.
I mean, I watched the game, but I heard they've not done well at all.
I watched movie. Some starters.
Yeah. So, is first. Is his first game this weekend then?
No, two weekends, then weekend off.
Okay.
No, no game this week. No, weekend off. Oh, I didn't have.
So, they actually be down to fifty three players by the end of this weekend?
Today.
Like today?
So, if you don't like putting in a couple, two or three days, you know.
It's in the minutes of their.
You know, we must. We must not have did that backflip very much because they can't hit extra points or field goals, so.
You gotta, you gotta score touchdown, you try to field extra point.
Jim Anderson scored.
And I understand that. You're telling your players.
Yeah.
They don't have half their players on play.
Yeah. See, Smith just got a big multi-year sixty four million hour, uh. Twenty two.
Twenty eight?
What the hell's his name? Number twenty two, defender, uh. Harris is. No, no.
I didn't see.
Three years, three years. I think sixty four million, it's three year, four year maybe, I don't remember now.
Four years. Thirty two years old.
He's a good player.
The al contract.
Yeah.
I just understand where the money comes from, but where do they get that kind of money?
Yeah, or go, have you been to a ballgame down there?
I went to a ballgame, but I can't afford it.
I, I was down there. We were down there when they had the open house kind of thing and I would.
Cheapest seat is what, a hundred bucks?
I would guess, I don't know.
I know they're, I know Kevin, they basically go in for a hundred eighty dollars.
Then you got a park, you got to eat. That's crazy.
That's a seven hundred dollar weekend or seven hundred dollar date.
Boy, if you happen to be as good down there, spend a night in the hotel, then I suppose Jack gets there too.
I was just thinking one day you'd be two seats, you'd be like four hundred bucks and you got food, you know, basically, well, shit, seven dollars, you'd be eight coming back.
What do they charge at Park down there? It must be thirty, forty bucks, huh?
I suppose. Sold out.
Yeah.
Definitely sold out.
Well, it's all corporate stuff to it, won't it?
TV stations could buy it all the time.
They did, the, uh, because if they weren't sold out, they couldn't broadcast, right? So, they had to buy it. You miss, if there's a seven, I do agree with that, or?
You like thirty, no?
It runs ten days from labor day, ten days back, whatever that is, I miss.
The software, it's gonna be, you can do that two dollars only, like four days.
Yeah, I think so, that's coming up, this weekend or?
This weekend.
So.
Yeah, because our extension, he's in two, two days tomorrow to take that stuff down.
Wish I had any dollar I could spend on a corn hog or a big tall, tiny Minnesota state fair. Do it all the time.
Anything I want.
There was a period of time, we used to go there five, six times a year and just drive down there after work and sit in the beer garden, drink some beers. The whole ten o'clock. You gotta work, it's so fun. It's a hassle.
Several of us, we can rotate.
Yeah. It's just so busy. We, we got to the point where we take buses down, we shouldn't have to screw up the parking and something like that, but that's just, because the last time we went, probably ten years ago, just happened to be at Senior Citizens Day, well, bunch of slow people going, get out of the way, hell, yeah, there. Come on, people, you got to get the hot dogs in, come on.
And all that.
Yeah, not by the.
That's usually the only place I got those.
Oh, yeah.
About as far as I've gotten.
Walked the midway once or something like that.
Boy, I've gone through some like.
Sure.
You gotta try some of that oddball stuff that they.
No.
No?
No, strictly the basics.
Deep fat frying Oreos or?
Oh, no. Cheese curds, longs. Rice fries. Everything covered in grease.
That's quite fair down there.
It is, yeah.
They were, they, at the Sioux Falls Fair this year, they were showing a base of wine. Guy, he, he had corn brats.
Corn brat?
And the, the brats were actually made in Eklon because they had to be made a special way. Otherwise, you know, regular brat doesn't work to deep fat fry it or do them. So, yeah, very interesting. There was an old guy that had, older guy that had the food booth and he had like six different flavors of corn brats. Like a jalapeno and a cheese and, but it was interesting that they were made in Eklon. Especially for, you know, it'd be a certain size and.
I bet now with the way they got all the flavored beers and flavored whiskey and stuff, they got some really weird flavored foods down there too, so.
We happened to be down there this weekend. We did go to the fair, but all the TV stations, yeah, we'll go to the fair and do this story on the other. And, you know, the grilled sweet corn is a real popular thing and they get it from one farmer, that that's all he does is he grows sweet corn for the state fair. And it has to be handpicked, it can't be machine picked. Yeah, it's a special kind of variety that comes from Japan and all this stuff. Certain kind of sweetness, then the kernels just have to hobble off real easy and it was. And it was an interesting story, and then, and then the cheese curd one, too, they interviewed a guy that runs that cheese curd stand, muff trucks and cheese curds, or whatever it is.
Yeah, they're exceptionally good.
It was just like, wow, they get fresh curds from Wisconsin every day, and it takes over 100 employees in order to make that thing work well.
Yeah.
If he runs two shifts, or whatever.
Did you go to the wedding dance?
No, we were down there, but we didn't go, we signed some clothes up, but, yeah. Local girl got married at the Renaissance Festival.
Oh, really?
Did you go, Tom?
No, we were, we were done.
That's another thing, being done at the Renaissance Festival, they had just walked the food for me, it was just... Turned the drum easy.
Chops.
Yeah. I used to like all that stuff, now it's too crowded for me. Is that the new book?
I have one in here for you, otherwise they're $10 apiece.
Really? Is this great wine?
It's also, you know, because we distribute it to offices, we get like 10, 30 ones a month. So I have one in here.
Minnesota State Fair, Alabama, my dad's favorite place to go.
Oh, that place is awesome.
I used to go there every year, every year.
Companies, both my wife and I work for, we use a pad of movie van to move our products, and so, one of the enticements they have, they come, they take you to the fair, and they... The guy that owned the company was like a diehard fair guy, he would go, he would get like 30 of the, the best seats to every show that they had, the grandstands, dead center, right, right where you wanted to be. And they take you to this place and give you hors d'oeuvres and drinks before the thing, and then they take you to the concert, and then afterwards, if you wanted to go on rides, they paid for all the stuff. So, we went one year, we did it a year with them, and then the next year, we were just there on our own again, and we saw the same guy, he said, "What are you guys doing here, we were just here last night?" I said, "Yeah, we're here four, five, six times a year," he said, "Oh, my God." At that point, on any ticket, we had, we had first choice, so you could go to 10, all 10 days, you know, that, but... Yeah, we became his best buddy. Yeah, he just, yeah, he spent a ton of money on that place.
Not so bad, huh?
You know what, I made a phone call out there, and I talked to the receptionist, but I don't have anything else, but she's saying Tyler is on the phone, he's been on the phone for a while, and she'll give him the message that we're ready for him, so, sure. He'll call ASAP, and I think Janessa was scheduled to come with him.
Yeah, she was going to, was she?
If she's doing the show with him.
It's be her last day, right?
So, we're gonna pay bills, and then, I don't know, what else we gotta do? Probably be it, huh?
Yeah.
Pay bills, and then we're done, or what?
Are we having on that last hole money, and, or when they're gonna tell us, or?
Well, you know, there's the bonus things, but I, I don't know, I'm just really, I'm just scared to spend that. And if you want to take my binder home, you certainly can, because we get stuff all the time, we may not got a binder this big, just hold.
And in no direction for the first district?
No, but they are having, there is coming, a Zoom meeting coming up next, next week, and then, you know, maybe it'll be a little bit more hard. And I know the association is kind of looking on maybe having First District, or IBALE kind of help, and after all that stuff, like they did with the COVID fund that we had to get, sign up for reimbursement for. But they need to come up with a price, I think all the companies will probably jump on and say, "Yes, we'll, we'll do it."
She is, Janessa?
Tyler's running a little bit behind, so I can talk to him tonight. I know he has a book.
Yes, indeed.
And that's kind of something I wanted to talk to you guys about, um, there's still so much to analyze there, and I don't really get in that spot. There's, you know, that rant something, that tons about the COVID, that I don't want to put that on somebody's radar, um, because it is, like, right now, we have the IBCP overtime grant, and that's a super good program, you know, they're outdoing all these hours, but that takes a lot of time. And having these new administration changes with, you know, Charlotte taking over, and, um, hopefully Lexi, but, um, I, I don't know for sure, I talked to the state editor about it, and he said it probably best if I find this out. Seeing as I've started it, my brand is on the grant, and I've kind of got the process down, and it's gonna be a huge transition, and it's not in September. So I'm hoping that it'll be okay, that I do continue to kind of pick up some part-time, and people transitioning, too, since it kind of, the way it fell, especially of getting those positions open and applications in for who wanted those positions. There hasn't been a lot of time to train somebody in on the ordering system, and on all these other things, and the contacts, and how to fix things in Zerker, and all these different things, so, um, I don't know if that would be an option, or how you guys would want to go about doing it. It would be better to do like a contracted amount, so it's not falling, you know what I mean, so it's an hourly thing, rather than me coming in and working, you know, shifts or anything like that, because it's, um, I don't think it's gonna take a lot of time, but it's gonna take some time above and beyond today.
You can't work two full-time jobs?
I wish, I wish, but, I mean, that's like a cool factor, it's never been, my heart's here, I love this place, I love the stuff that we, you know, built in the last six years I've been here, I feel like it's, it's, it's gone really well, and there's a lot of programs that I've implemented there that I don't want to fail. You know, like an emergency medical dispatch, I think it's an amazing thing for this county, um, it's going well, but there's transition periods there, too, where, and I, I've got to get numbers pulled, um, for that, because I think there might be still a little bit of money left in that grant money to get Lexi those certifications. Um, because I think, for economic reasons, I believe she's gonna be the one that's gonna be the more hard for anybody else to apply for it. But she, you know, she'll have to go through a system admin training, and the reports training, and all these other things, that I think I can wrestle some money out of that, so that way I won't have to come back, that that's gonna have to be paid for, but I think we still got a little bit of training money in that budget, because I don't think we're gonna send everybody to anything so far this year, but... That would be the main certification she would need, and, um, and we're gonna, I'll have to still come back and do a couple of hollering views, but I think I'm gonna be able to do it mainly from home, so that way it's not, you know, we have to comment, and I have a problem doing that, so... But yeah, I just, I definitely want to make sure that we have these transition, and it's not gonna cause any pickups, and what we got, so, I think you guys are okay with that, and then...
Appreciate your concern for your job, that you're willing to do.
I actually, I said, I love this place, I love the job, I want to make sure that it goes well, and I don't want to leave her in a bad spot where it is stressing her out, and she wouldn't want to do any of it, because it is, it's a great position, it's a great, you know, opportunity to try and make some changes when things need to be done, and I feel like she's a great contact for that. But yeah, we, like I said, there's, and then we got that cop's hiring grant, and things like that, but the amount of time it's gonna take to try to explain that to somebody, it's gonna be easier just to finish out, and try to make somebody up to speed, and not have to go, because it's a constant, like, you know, change of the grant, and you'll kick it back and say, "We gotta make sure this is right." I don't want to put that on anybody, so, um, I think that would be probably best, and I don't know what you guys would think as far as contracting it by hour, or is that something you guys want to do, or just kind of like as a transitional period for a position?
I think that's the fairest way to do it, don't you, that, however many hours it takes, and whether it's Jim or Tyler that approves that schedule?
And then what do you think for that, as far as, what do you think as far as the power of your range? I guess, I, I kind of want to leave it up to you guys, I don't wanna, you know, I, I don't know, and, I mean, without doing insurance, or, you know, benefits, or anything like that, I just, I think it'd be easy, it's just to do it that way, and having to worry about anything else, you know? And being, you know, being a part-time physician, just, like I said, it's not gonna take me long, I'd say, a good month or so, just really working with them in the evenings, you know, Lex is willing to kind of shift her schedule a little bit, work with her. And then, um, I kind of set up a process, and my whole, the go-to meetings, everything, if there's an issue, they can remote in, um, or I can remote into that computer and say, "Hey, this is the way you gotta do it," so that way it's gonna be the best, but I don't know for sure what you guys think regarding that.
Maybe we should chat with Tyler, James, about that, get their blessings.
I didn't even talk to him today, he was, I think Tyler would really appreciate that, especially with, um, you know, his administrative assistant position, making over part of those duties, to try to get him, you know, where he needs to be, and... I, I think it's the best way to do it, too, with getting all those duties divided up, because you don't want it to be a position like this, where you got, you know, stressed out, you want to be stressed with that kind of thing. I think the more minds are there, and that, I think it's gonna help, you know, you can have your, your meetings, you got one person to kind of follow the ideas off, and figure out where to go from there. Yeah, and I've got approval from, you know, sheriff over there, and so do whatever you gotta do, as far as, you know, making sure we leave it in a good spot, so... It's a handful. But, um, I, I, I was kind of, with you guys, I don't want to make it into a bad thing either, with you and a contractor involved, but I think that might be, it's easy, so, yes, yeah.
If you come in here and do whatever you wanted, we'd all appreciate the fact that you're going in, we'd say yes, so, and trust you to do it right the first way, so...
Is he here?
Yeah.
Oh, good.
He was just calling some numbers. And there's one other thing, and we'll talk back to that, but, um, I talked to Jim Pearson a lot this weekend, we had a storm that hold through, and we kind of noticed some pickups with the overall process that we have on who calls out the storm spotters, you know, where that communication comes to dispatch, so we know what's going on. Um, and we had some things that came up, but I feel like we kind of came to a good resolution to figure that out. Um, but one thing he had brought up is, a lot of times it is really hard to get into a storm with the phone numbers that we have. And he had recommended possibly adding a spill over line for emergency management, because we have, you know, just through the whole system that, like, we have 7667, 7668, those numbers, you know, somebody calls in on 7667, there's a backup line that it spills over to. What we have going on is, it's very consistent through the data switch, that our 7667, 7668 lines are being tied up, because that's our outgoing lines for jail, for dispatch, for exception, sheriff, you know, everybody's using those, and it's hard to get through. So then that 3800 line, which is supposed to be our emergency management line, is being used for additional outgoing calls, whether it's dispatch to an officer, or another admin trying to call out, and he's having trouble getting it. So he was recommending adding spill over line for the emergency management line, which I don't think would be a problem, it's in our phone systems, it would just be adding another line. Exactly, and I think that would really, I think it would help, and then we wouldn't have that frustration from him during a situation, or things starting to fall in, and not be able to reach us. And like I said, the whole situation, I think, was just communication pickup that we were able to, I think we were able to come up with a plan, and I'm gonna keep working with him to make sure that that doesn't fall on my next, you know, whoever's taking over his shoulders, because, like I said, I don't want them to be overwhelmed with visions that I'm aware of already, and feel like therapy I need all the risk is there. And it should be an exciting experience, it's a great step up, and I think, you know, I guess like I said, everyone is being overwhelmed, like, it should.
Is it citizens that are, that are kind of jamming the emergency management line, or is it...
No, not a lot of people, no, that, that's not really a public...
The spotters that are doing this?
No, it's...
What, what's causing them, or the jamming?
So, let's, let's say, you try to warn your local city, um, what we have to do in dispatch is we make home calls to whatever area, so let's say it's gonna hit the whole county, we're calling every single fire department on those lines, trying to get out, plus home calls are coming in, well, hey, is there bad weather, is this, you know, and it's just this jamming up those lines, and we're trying to call everyone of the, you know, first responders, fire departments, getting storm sweaters out. And then on top of that, we're calling assisted living, nursing home, um, state parks, the golf course, you know, there's all these contacts, and then Jim's trying to call in as well.
Sure.
To say, "Hey, make sure you update everybody that it looks like it's moving this direction," and it's just kind of causing a whole cluster, when that line...
Thanks for that explanation, it helps me understand that.
Yeah, and that line's supposed to be kind of dedicated just to emergency management, and it's, with not having enough lines to go out, it's getting users an outgoing line during all situations, and then I think that's kind of some of the frustration, but...
Sure.
I've got questions for us, that. Is Jim the supervisor over the storm, chasers, or whatever you storm?
He has watches.
Okay, how many do you have?
Um, there's, that's Rossell, Corona, Wellington, Sisseton, Southern, Corona. Yeah, I would say eight or nine.
Okay. Isn't that his responsibility, shouldn't he be the one?
Yeah, we've kind of, we talked about that, we, we had a interesting conversation that day regarding, because it was a, um, overall situation when it happened, was there was a possible tornado, um, you know, rotations and clouds that was coming, it was coming towards Mill Lane, but there was possibility that it could come towards Corona, so it was being listed as Corona as well. Um, and I, you know, I expressed some concern, because I got a call from the dispatch, and said, "As far as where are we, where are this, and are we supposed to call Jim?" And I called Jim, and I was like, you know, "Dispatch doesn't move forward unless we get a call from you saying activate the tornado sirens, you know, that's, that's our policy, that we don't activate, we must pull it so by a higher person that's more aware of the weather situation." And he, you know, he said, he wasn't aware, because he needed notification, you know, there was some pickups that had happened there, where the weather service didn't necessarily notify him, because the bulk of the storm was coming through Grant County, it was just a possibility that Corona could be in it. But, like I told him, that maybe we need to talk to the weather service about expanding that rate, you know, that range, that if it is a possibility, then you should be directly notified, as province county, which is the management, so we can be prepared, so it doesn't come back that the tornado comes through Corona, and others won't be, you know, in the loop on it. So he figured, we got that resolved at the end, and then he did say that he had called out the storm spotters in the Southern part of the county, well, dispatch didn't know any of that, so then they were kind of up in arms, like, "We're aware of this situation's going on, as far as we know, there's no storm spotters out, there's nothing going on." So I think it was more of a communication error, on, you know, if dispatch were to be notified, we wouldn't have been concerned. And I think we fixed that, so like he had said, anytime he's gonna call them out directly, he's gonna notify dispatch, dispatch will start a log, and then we'll have that moved forward, or the first responders or fire departments are gonna go in service over the radio, so we at least know that they're helping. Because at that point, we didn't know any of that, and everything kind of turned into a panic situation, so I think, like I said, that was on, what, Saturday?
Yes.
Saturday morning, and we kind of hashed it out right there, we had a good hour and 20 minute phone call about it, and I think, I think we got it resolved. Um, but that was one of these recommendations, is getting that extra line added as a spill over, so, and like you said, it's a couple dollars a month, I think it will resolve, you know, some issues there, and create an extra line for dispatch to, and given that things are backing up, which they do a lot, where you try to call in, and the phone's busy, we're having trouble calling out. which they do a lot, where you try to call in and the phone's busy and we're having trouble calling out.
So the six o'clock, six o'clock page test that the sheriff's department does every night that goes to the various communities, um, and, and they, some communities respond, other ones don't. But is that the same frequency in, in radio talk that the emergency responders, the fire department and the spotters and stuff? So is that, is that communication being heard by our dispatchers?
It is. So that's when, that was one of my things with him as well is just, I don't care how he sets it up. You know, if he wants it to be that he just calls and lets us know that they're activated or if they want to come through on the radio and say, we're out and about, we're in this part of the county looking, you know, storm spotted. And, you know, either way, it's going to be beneficial because still we have communication. But a lot of times when they're out storm spotting, they're talking over the radio saying, it looks like there might be a rotation over here. And we're hearing that because it's coming over the emergency management. Yep, so, um, and then that was the other concern that I brought up. Rather than tying up these phone lines and calling all these people because, you know, we don't always answer our phones. So then you're calling somebody, they might not pick up, you're leaving a voicemail hoping they call back but then going second to command to the next person in line on the list and calling them as well. So you might have twenty-five phone calls to make while you're dealing with people calling in, hey, it looks like there's bad weather coming, you know, plus the normal traffic of the phones too. You know, maybe we should look at a system, like just paging them over the radio, which we didn't necessarily want to do. Um, but then he also mentioned alert signs. You know, that's something that we can get set up with dispatch where we can send those alert signs straight to the first responders' phones as well. So we've got a couple of options.
It's just like push button that goes out to all these people.
Yep, so we've got some options that we work on. And again, that's, that comes back to the stuff that I would like to try to finalize rather than, okay, you know, you've, you've got this new position, you've got all the stuff to learn, plus you're trying to work out these kinks that I feel like would be pretty easy to run out, but not having a kind of normal hour is kind of an issue, so.
Hate to put you on the spot, but is that something that he should assume responsibility for? Or do you, do you want dispatch still to handle that?
I, as long as there's communications from him, I think dispatch is fine with it. Because again, they're the type of people that, if they know what's done, they, they're going to be more comfortable with it. But if, we just got to make sure that there's that communication that he's saying, okay, I need this seven and a half of the county storm spotters activated. As long as we've got that communication, dispatch is fine with that because there's easier ways to go about it than calling those phone numbers. You know, there's those slackers, there's the alert signs, there's the e-dispatchers that we have now. Um, there's different ways to go about it, but I think we can implement to fix that. At least I mentioned this communication from him to us what to do. And I think we worked that out pretty well, I think, you know?
He's calling people, he's not making, you guys are doing it to your order.
Yep, so. And that's, that was the thing. And it wasn't necessarily that they did extra work, it was just that panic of, we know this is coming, we never had any contact, what's going on, and then I'm getting called and then calling them. And granted, you know, he did do that. He went, you know, went above and called them directly, which was great. But it's just that communication gap that kind of caused a little, a little tiff. But I think we, like I said, we worked it out just fine. It was definitely something that was easily resolved. Just some, yeah. And kind of told them a little bit about, um, what I was thinking as far as doing like a contracted thing with like some hours to try to get, you know, that administrative assistant to you, get James trained on some of those things. And then working with my replacement to try to get that stuff resolved. If it would be easy, maybe like just a contracted hour would be great so I can work with them rather than having to do it all.
I mean, I think it's in our best interest. Especially with the, uh, what I don't want to do is put the person that goes in the janitor's spot and expect them to check right out where she left off. So we are trying to kind of spread that burden across a couple of different people. And it would be, it would be incredibly beneficial for us to have, or pass some of those things, pass some of those things on. Especially with us, um, maintaining our grant requirements is probably one of the biggest, the biggest and most important things. It's maybe the only grant requirement. We had a thing come up last, last Friday with one of the auditors for the highway safety grant. Um, because we used CARESAC money for last October, November, December. That disqualified us, um, for those overtime, for that overtime for those three months. So now, um, in September here, our, the officer group is trying to make up as much of that overtime as possible for most three months so that we're still eligible for the, for the overtime grant. So.
Yeah, because that did make a pretty, you know, October, November, December, we had mobilizations for, you know, DUIs, things like that, that we had to be part, as part of the grant to participate in the national mobilizations. So we lost a lot of it, but again, we got reimbursed with CARESAC money. So it didn't hurt much, but we have extra money sitting in that grant right now for overtime hours that it doesn't hurt to try and give that back. You know, to try to get some of that stuff taken care of. Um, plus we have to have a certain match amount, which is taken up by the hours that they're actually working, you know, regular shift hours running speed enforcement or, um, occupant protection. So like seat belts, you know, they're outdoing those things. So I think we kind of worked together a little on that where he's got some hours and he's able to flex those officers where there's double coverage. And one officer is going to be specifically doing stuff like that during regular hours as well as doing some overtime hours to make up our local match. Um, but again, like that stuff that is an ongoing process and then it's getting it set up. Once we get this grant finalized, we're issuing it for the next grant for next year to do the same thing. But we got to get this finalized, make it a better process. Because that was something that I started last October and I don't think I was aware of it until like February. So we're kind of trying to like catch up this whole time to keep it going. Um, and thankfully that auditor came down just to work with me the other day and they went through all the numbers and then told me exactly what I needed to do. I think we've got a better process. Um, it builds a custom module in Zerker so that way when they're out and about, they just lock down their hours, how many citations, attach their citations, and it's a super easy process. So, but it's getting somebody trained in on that stuff as well. So it's an easy thing that they know, these are the numbers I need to keep, these are the reimbursement forms that need to get filled out and this is the balance we're going to look for. Because it, it is a process and if you don't do it right, it's, you kind of are in that headache that I'm in right now of trying to like catch up with a lot of that, so. I think, yeah, that stuff is, that's just big. And then if, hopefully, you know, fingers crossed, we can get that cop's hire re-grant or do the best grant that that stuff keeps, you know? I read the manuals front and back now, so it's kind of one of those things where you don't want to put somebody behind a eight ball with that stuff and then lose it.
We don't get an issue, we can contract with you to submit this horse next year.
We could, yeah. Hey, I like writing grants, so, and I'm fine with that, but. Yeah, it's just, just the idea of grants can use people all along with somebody that's never done anything with it. And I don't want to, I don't want to stress somebody after having all of that. And then not necessarily have them not do the position, but to lose that money that we've already worked. You know, the amount of hours to even just apply for the grant is, you know, enough that it would hurt to lose that opportunity, so.
But seriously, I would think if, if you're in a position where you, you have some grants available because of your experience and want to do that as an assignment, of course, I could see that prove that pretty easily.
Yeah, and then like I said, I love this county, I love this place. Sadly, you know, with the opportunity that's presented, I, I did have to kind of think, you know, eat to pie Monday through Friday, you know, kind of a normal life. But I definitely don't want to see the stuff that I've tried to put in place to help the county. But you know, you know, it's, there's a lot going on and a lot to train people and I don't want to see that. Sorry, in the ordering thing, I mean, there's, there's a process with that where I think it's really beneficial because I feel like we're overspending so much. I mean, just cleaning supplies alone, I look at, like, that's just one of the things that, that disinfectant for the floors and that stuff, we're spending a hundred and fifty dollars per hour, we're spending fifty dollars for a five gallon bill. You know, there's so many things like that, but I just want to make sure that that stuff doesn't.
Do you find that I could still have this stain?
I'm not, no. But I was, I was, I do want to, I want to see the people that take it over not get stressed out and appreciate it and know how to do it and not let it just go to the wayside or the easy way again. It's not always the easy way, that's the last way, so. But yeah, hey, as long as you guys will be okay with that, we can figure out, you know, what you guys thought as far as an hour a moment, definitely be interested in trying to help transition easy. Get some stuff that I want for you guys.
Is that something we can discuss now?
Yeah. You want to do that in the second session?
Do you want to go through your stuff first and then you can do that?
Yes, I can do that.
Yeah, you have some stuff to go through yourself, so I want you to do your stuff.
Uh, I don't have a lot really this week. Current inmate column is at sixty-one. There are a couple, we will have a couple bills coming in from the, from the sheriff's side of things. I had to order, um, two more body cameras. And that came to right around a thousand dollars for those two. And two more radios that also came to right around a thousand fifty dollars, two-way radios. Um, I did hear back from Wyatt and he is going to be starting with us on the twenty-seventh. So, um, it will be, he'll be probably working, um, a little bit in our jail side and a little bit on our, on our deputy side. It'll happen kind of just in time for him to spend a month or so training in on our, on our deputy area. It's probably not going to take near as long as our outsiders sometimes do to learn the geography. So that part won't take as long, we just have to train him to be a police officer. You know, long-term in the next year, we would have to put him through the, the police academy. But, um, as far as, as far as that goes, it's a pretty small price to pay for a local person coming back and starting a career in law enforcement and stuff. So it'll be a, it'll be a huge help to us, you know, especially with, uh, deputy being leaving in. So he'll kind of just roll right into his spot. Where does that go? Uh, other than, than those couple of things, I know I'm beating a dead horse. Um, but I did go through and, and calculate out numbers for what I think is a proposal for a, um, for wage increases for the entire Roberts County Sheriff's Office. These, these are, if you look under the left-hand column there, um, James and I were here the other day and we talked about some of those new positions, um, that we would, that we could potentially add to our jail. Uh, and these are all positions that currently fall under our jail budget. We don't have anybody in these positions. When I talked to James today, I informed him that we wouldn't, we wouldn't really rush to fill these positions until we go through an application process and fill them with the right people. After, even with the process of looking at hiring some additional staff on this, we may potentially hire somebody on as a new correctional officer that may fit into one of those positions. Uh, so what it would, what it would have come for would be sixteen correctional officers total. That's ten, that's ten just regular base correctional officers. Uh, somebody that's designated as a jail field training officer. Also involved in a training coordinator portion, uh, transport supervisor, two shift supervisors, a jail admin assistant, and then a jail administrator, which adds up to sixteen. I did put the, the jail janitor in there and the nurse as well, as those are both paid out of the, the jail budget. Now, if you, if you add all those up as full-time employees, uh, it would create an expenditure of six hundred and forty-one thousand dollars. The jail salary budget with the jail salary and the juvenile, and the juvenile budget together comes to eight hundred and sixty-two thousand six hundred dollars.
Jail and juvenile?
Jail and juvenile. So, no overtime, of course. We would be just at that one-year starting, uh, that starting pay rate. We would be two hundred and twenty-one thousand dollars, five hundred and ninety dollars, under, under budget. Uh, extrapolate that out to that one-year timeframe, the majority of our, the majority of our staff right now, a quick percentage of them, fit inside of that one-year, that one-year timeframe. Even our jail administrator is, I think he's just about reaching a year and a half. You're looking at an expenditure of six hundred and sixty-four thousand eight hundred and twenty-three dollars. And that's just carrying the budget over. And we still have left with a hundred and ninety-seven thousand seven hundred and ninety-seven dollars under that budget, barring overtime.
The biggest saving from what you proposed in here versus that, the original budget, is that reduction in?
We're actually taking six, six employees, six correctional officers out of the budget.
Right, you want, you're adding twenty-two, it'll be now sixteen.
Sixteen.
Okay, yeah. And that's the twelve-hour shift and that?
Yes, now that's, that would be sticking with our twelve-hour, twelve-hour shifts. Um, and working our, working our shifts that, that way.
You think that would work better, John?
I think it'll work better because it's easier, it's easier for, um, it's easier, it's easier for scheduling, for one. Uh, it creates less overlapping as far as, you know, you have, sometimes you'll have an hour or two of overlapping time where one shift is starting, one shift is leaving. It's easier for supervisors to stick to more of a standard, you know? This is always the shift that I'm, that I'm going to work. The only thing that I didn't include in here would be the, uh, the fifty cent shift differential. So that's the only thing, that's the only thing that's not, that's not in there.
Rich, right now, when, when do you give that up?
Uh, eleven to eight AM.
Like, I wonder, since I went on that, if you were going to do that, I wonder if it would be easiest kind of why I just do a shift differential, you're going to do from midnight until eight. At least then we are on that, you're on Monday. You know what I mean? And then if you, well, what were your shifts going to be, seven to seven?
Um, I'm not sure what you'd put on the schedule for September. But I don't know if they have already started that shift time or that new schedule for this.
Well, you're going to have two, you know, seven to seven, then setting to seven. It's going to be one price and then probably to eight, it's going to be another. It's going to be confusing for the master work.
I guess, I mean, it's, it's on the, on the page, on the time clock. Yeah, but I don't know. You know, it would be best to maybe bring Kristina and see what she'd recommend with that too. Because since she's going to do the one that's looking at as far as shift differential goals. Because I can always try to make something look in the time block system too before I leave to accommodate that, but I don't know.
If you just pay the night shift for the whole twelve-hour, I mean, it's like two dollars a shift for a person. So I clean her, just to give it to them, you're, you're working the night shift, twelve-hour shift to get some hours. I would personally. I would, personally, I think that would be the easiest, two dollars would be the easiest way, which would also encourages, encourages people to go to that shift for us.
Do you wanna explain something?
Maybe we go to seven, seven to seven.
So they were talking about doing twelve-hour shifts on the night side and the shift differential. As far as time parts though, would it be easiest just to, if you're doing twelve-hour shifts, just do the shift differential for that full twelve hours rather than doing like the eleven to seven, and midnight to eight is one wage, and then those other hours wouldn't be, since it's not worth it. So easiest would be just doing straight across, not having to worry about trying to figure out what's technically overnights, if they're doing straight twelves for everybody.
Six, six dollars per shift, me, she, she'll say that in her, yeah.
Yeah, but my question would, okay, I need to complicate it, but I was doing. So yeah, somebody that's supposed to be off at seven PM and say they have to work till ten because we're in the middle of something. Do they get that fifty cents extra now, or they're not going?
I would say no.
Okay.
I would say no.
So how would I know that?
If they're a day shift employee, then they, they get the day shift rate, that, that's how I would.
So how would I know that?
Because that would all technically be on, they would just be extended a little bit further, so I'd say unless they're doing that overnight, starting at eight PM, working till eight AM, if they work eight AM and work until ten PM, they're still on that leash and wage. They're not getting the night shift differential. Is what we're gonna get there, right? Rather than all of a sudden, they might work two hours into the night shift, but
Then they would just get normal overtime.
Then they're just gonna get their normal
You're, you're someone who starts in a night shift and they, two extra hours of pay for their shift, that would be like the two hours.
Well, that's just normal, you know, on a daily.
And then you really wouldn't have to worry about any breaking up of shifts, any extra hours, it's just if you're a day shift employee, you're working day shift, you're gonna make day shift. If you get on the overnights, then you're gonna get overnight shift differential for that shift starting at eight PM to eight AM.
Or are they definitely seven, seven?
Yeah, if we just, I, I'm not so sure what his shifts are gonna be at the start of the day, but
So are you jailers and dispatchmen on the same shifts, because right now they don't?
No, I think the jailers are on the twelves, because they're so short, but I think dispatch may tend to meet this, but it's not doing anything weird.
So if your dispatchers work those weird hours, like when you, sometimes you schedule them to start eight to four, they get, they don't get those four hours at fifty cents? So it's just a jailer if you're talking about?
Yeah, I would just keep dispatch.
So I'm still gonna have to break it down?
Yeah.
Okay, just asking, I've been doing it for years, so it's, I'm just asking my folks to do. Because I hate it when I come back and try and miss.
I'm just on the jail side right now for, for that, how we have the shift differential set.
Just the correctional office, so.
Yeah, because dispatch is gonna stay pretty much, I don't think, there might be, the way I did the schedule for September, there might be some hangovers at four o'clock in the morning, but otherwise, everybody should be working pretty normal shifts, but there just might be those couple that start at four PM and work till four AM. And then you have four hours, but, and that's something, I don't know if that's what we wanna do, is do a shift differential for somebody that starts at four PM and carries over to four AM, or if you just believe that at the normal wage, because they start at the swing shift and just carry over a little bit.
How about if we did before?
She's taken through and gone through and broke down, you know, if they cut them off at midnight, well, they work four extra hours, so they get four hours of shift differential. Which I know that's a huge headache too, but I don't know if that's
So our dispatchers are on eight-hour shifts, they're?
And I tried to work always in the twelves, and it's, it's really hard to do twelves right now, because I've got with Kathy not having her EMD certification, she's not technically not on the certified, so she's not able to answer nine or one calls. So I always have to have somebody with her to answer those, and we've got so many new people, plus we have Logan who's only part-time, and Tim who can only work eight hours shifts. So it makes it really hard to try to schedule twelves, when you've got one that can't work twelve-hour shifts, and one that's not certified, technically you've got four not certified. So it's kinda hard to try to put two people that are, you know, at least having a certified person on those twelves, but So I think eight's probably best there, because you have
I wondered if we could use our twelve-hour shifts?
Yeah, they start at two. I guess, I guess I would propose that maybe if we were to start this, that we give ourselves some time to figure out everybody's years of service and start this in October. You know, because what I would, what I would like to do is, if somebody has been working for working in corrections for three years and then they move into a shift supervisor, they should be able to use those years of service of training that we've already provided them and take that years of service with them. So if they, if they started as a, if they've been with us for five years and move into a shift supervisor, they would start at that eighteen seventy-seven.
We do that, that's our policy now, as long as you're a county employee, no matter if you move from department to department.
So then I just wanted to make that
Goes with you.
Yeah, and I just wanted to make that, that clear, that, you know, this would be, that starting pay for all would be from now going forward. Which more often than not, it would be what our starting pay would be for a starting correctional officer, is what it would start. Uh, and then I, below the the jail side, I did break down the dispatching side of our budget as well. You know, we talked about Lexi starting at, at the dispatch coordinator at seventeen dollars. Nine dispatchers, so for a grand total of ten, ten staff members. That expenditure would be at three hundred forty-four thousand two hundred forty. Our dispatch budget with our nine-one-one center budget added together comes to about three hundred fifty thousand dollars. So it would be, so with that, with that proposal, we would only be, we'd still be almost six thousand dollars under, under budget. I know there's not a lot of wiggle room there, but we do have, you know, we do have some wiggle room. A pre-substantum, or with wiggle room coming from what's left over in our jail budget, if we needed to, to move something from one area to the other. At that one-year, at that one-year timeframe, which a lot, about half of our, half of our dispatchers would probably fall below or inside of that one-year, the three-year mark. We're gonna be at about three fifty-eight, two seventeen. Um, which would be eight thousand over that budget. But like I said, if, if you compare it to where we're at on our jail side, jail side budget, we still have just short of two hundred thousand dollars that we have available to us there. Do you understand that? Am I making sense?
Yeah, just, I have a question on the dispatch. Were both, all at nine?
So I, we initially, before we had added for ten positions plus the coordinator stuff. And that was a couple years back when it separated a little bit, but I don't think it's necessary to have ten. You know, after working with that, and especially with taking some of those duties that were, kind of like, fell on my ground and divided out with the administrative assistants and the coordinator, I don't think it's necessary to completely separate that person. And I know before we had Kathy was picking up some full-time hours, Rose was still there working full-time, she was working towards her retirement. And so to get all the shifts covered, we had that extra position, but I think it'd be okay to cut one of those and keep it at nine full-time rather than ten.
Which, that's what we're currently saying yet, right?
Yeah, but then would that be on certified, yeah, so once they're certified, they'll have nine certified, and I think one part-time. Which Logan picks up a day or two a month, but
Correctional, sixteen total?
Sixteen, including jail administrator.
How come I had it in my mind, twenty-two, something?
Twenty-two is what we were budgeted for. At, at the starting
Five, with sixteen?
With sixteen, especially with twelve-hour shifts.
Get rid of the twenty-two in my mind.
Is it two or three jailers at a time?
Uh, it'll actually be closer to six, five, five, right on five, five, five to six with a supervisor.
Let me, per shift, I mean
Oh, per shift.
Two, two hundred, three hundred, normally, pressure for three now, right?
It'll be, it'll be, depending on the day, it's gonna be, the lowest we should have is four. Lowest we should have on a shift is four. Which with our inmate ratio, and we're typically operating at above sixty inmates, that's, that's what we need to and with our marshal service inmates, okay? Because if we have a, if we have a marshal service inmate that needs to take a transport, it requires two guys. But the thing that we've been doing to combat that is, we're getting our reserve, our reserve program is back going. We have two people just already completed our reserve program, I have two more signed up to go through our reserve program this coming January. Once they are to get through our reserve programs, they're able to carry firearms for us and work as a deputy. And they need to maintain, maintain their reserve status by basically working for us.
So if you had two of those reserve guys, they would, they have
They would be able to do, yeah, yeah, they'll be firearms certified.
And we charge a crap lot of the DOC for that, right?
Yes, they, and we get, we get fully reimbursed for all, all wages that would incur from a transport. And you, we see that our, James receives that to them separately from what the marshals pay for in room and board. So that comes on a separate, comes in a separate
So can you please, do two people complete the program again?
They will complete the program in December.
How long is it?
They have to complete almost three hundred fifty hours of ride-along time. Plus about a hundred hours of class time that, that we, that we are providing to them. They go through, we do search and seizure, we do firearms, we do two days of firearm training, and then sergeant staffs with assistant police departments, a firearms instructor who will come out and will certify on our reservists with their firearms. They do EMT work, they do CPR, A Ds, dealing with juveniles, dealing with they just kinda do a little bit of everything, the curriculum is set out by the state, and we, we provide them those hours.
Is the state-certified program in them?
Yes, yep, yep, so they will be actually certified through the state itself to code as a, as a reserve deputy.
And they're quite curious, you know, obviously, if they're, go back on, check, the eighteen, that's it?
Yep.
Assistant had that years ago, because I remember, before we moved up here, there was a bunch of old guys I knew that were in that class, you know, so there were city staffs or deputies or what?
And it's a, we're trying to use it as a fun program to get people interested, and we've, I've had people off the street hear about it now and are coming in and saying, you know, that's why we already have two that are that are already signed up and ready to go in January. So I would expect that by then, we might have, we may have four, that, that's probably the most we could take at a time. Because we only have, we have one instructor for each one of our classes, so, but it will, it will help. It'll help us even more with, you know, having more firearms certified people in our facility. Then it requires us to take jail staff off of our floor less, so that we're, we have the right number of people inside of our facility, reducing the need for them to be leaving and sitting at a doctor's appointment.
So it's not costing us anything in wages? What kind of liability do we need?
For having a reserve deputy? Um, they fall, we have a reserve deputy policy in our policy manual. They, they fill out all the same requirements that a, one of our deputies would as far as risk and risk and liability goes. Once they, once they complete their reserve status, they will be sworn in as a reserve deputy for Roberts County. And then anytime we, we request their assistance on anything, they are able to assume full police powers for us.
Do we have to do anything for this, our, our insurance? By building insurance, or anything with our insurance, or, or what?
Right now, all of those deputies, or all of those people in our reserve program are, currently work for the sheriff's office. But there is somebody that is, that is going to be going through the reserve program in January, or starting in January, that he will be an outside, an outside entity coming in, becoming certified.
And technically, it should just be the same as whatever we're doing with Renee, because Renee's technically a reserve deputy status.
I could fact that.
I mean, I don't know, I mean, I'm just
I would guess it must be some kind of umbrella, if you're under contract, how many you have?
Umbrella.
Yeah.
I wanna make sure they're covered.
Especially if you're state-certified, yeah, we're checking in, we're sure.
Every state convention I've been to, the public assurance alliances presented, presented something at some workshop or something, and I would hope that they would be at your sheriff's association meetings as well.
I mean, it just, maybe, I just wanna make sure, you know, how many was responsible for reporting this to them? We didn't, you know? Yeah, we now have this reserve program.
Tyler, is your, is your new organizational chart modeled after any other detention center, or is this something that you and James have worked on?
This is something that I've worked on, and I brought James in this morning and asked kind of for his approval to see what, what he thought about it.
I think kind of I was saying this off too before, and it is a very similar setup to kind of what Travis helped us with. As far as the, the hierarchy of having assistance and having
The, yeah, and, and the percentage, the percentage increases would allow two people that started at the same time, but yet, hey, I've taken an additional role. That increase, especially when you, when you get to, you know, year one, that three percent starts to improve for you faster than it does for somebody else, but now we're, now we're rewarding both our people that have, that have been there for us. And we're getting a lot closer to where some of the other correctional facilities are, are, you know, we're still ways, we're ways below where Cottigny County starts. But I think with, I think with this, this jump, and being able to kind of look out and, and look down the road and say, you know, hey, in just a year, I'm making almost seventy-five cents more than, than what I was when I started. You know, and then the next year, I get another, two years after that, there, there's another three percent increase. I think this helps to keep us a lot more comparable down the, down the road, and I think Cottigny, starting at twenty-two, so we're a ways, we're a ways away from that. But you know, you know, this allows us to take a significant enough jump today to get us to get us a little bit closer. Uh, I know, talking to one of the jailers that we have now that comes all the way from Watertown. His impression from some of his friends is that if, if we were a little bit more comparable, the drive would be worth it. And those are the people we want to, to be able to attract. That way, that way we're attracting them more at sixteen, fifty than we are at forty-two.
You know, they're not gonna start looking around, that's, that's medic's concern with the dispatch and stuff too. And, and jailers, it's easy to look around and be, oh, I did over here and made this. At least if you're in that realm, which I think that puts you in that realm of, this is good, you know, this is, this is good for this position. They're not gonna look over to Tribe or to, you know, Marshal County, Travers County, things like that, they're gonna be okay stating. And I think we've got a really good crew, you know, the people that we do have that have stuck it out, you know, for the years that they've been there on the jail side dispatch, I mean, they're people we want to keep.
One last question. Longevity, okay? On our current longevity, you know, you're, you're good to get to five years, but in our, for all of our employees, it's after seven years. We get a, you know, jump, and you jump from five to ten. Do we want, what if, or just, if we approve this, is that something we want to keep everybody the same? Rather than jump from five year to ten year, jump to seven year?
I'm fine with that, I think you'd want.
I mean, I think we want to keep our employees all the same.
That's, that's fine, this was.
I mean, I gave it more money earlier, but.
Yeah, this is just, you know, I would, I'm, I'm perfectly fine with that and, you know, adjusting that seven year to, that seven year to the, staying on the same track with the three percent.
Rather than five year, go to ten year, five to seven.
Yeah, at the seven year mark would be three percent.
So you'd do ten?
Year would be five percent.
No, 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 our, our K, our current is, you know, the starting wage. And then after six months, so we're the same, after one year, after three years, after five years, and then after seven years.
So you'd swap that to ten for seven?
Yeah.
In the, in the five percent to three percent as well or no?
Well, I, I'm not addressing that.
Well, it's a short period of time, right? So I think that would.
I mean, I'm just recommending we go seven to keep it. I'm saying as the others.
So then are we going to change all, everybody's longevity then to a percentage or has it been?
Well, I'm not, that's something to discuss, that's something to be discussed.
I was thinking for eight years, but I don't want to come.
I'm just opening it up, so.
No.
I'm just, we're starting, I'm just starting at the fine period.
And this, you know, and I did this, I did this purely based on coming in, in significantly under our budget. Not trying to push our budget to the, to the rim, but what could we, how could we balance it so that that we can get a little, get closer to the, to the average, especially to jails that are comparable to, to ours. Coming in close to fifteen marshal service inmates, we're dealing with a different crowd than, than what your jails are that are having, you know, inmates max capacity.
It's a serious issue, but I, I think you can massage those, I mean, if we decide to go to dispatch, you think you can massage it to something that you're used to working with?
Just for a dollar figure in that.
Yeah.
Same numbers.
Even though I'd love to see percentages.
Maybe it was the budget or was that wages only or was that included benefits?
That, that was wages only, no benefits, no benefits included, which, uh, like I said, we're decreasing six full-time employees from, from the jail side and one from the dispatch side. And, you know, so we're saving, we're saving a little bit that way. You know, this doesn't, this doesn't include, you know, if we get some of those part-time employees that are helping us out and not, not giving benefits as well. Those are things that just make our lives even easier and, quote, decrease. Ultimately, will get us even further, further under, under that at budgets.
I think you said you had four part-timers, how, how often do you utilize them? Can you say five hours a week, ten hours a week, or it's so intermittent?
Usually, usually it's, usually it's between about twenty versus thirty.
Oh, that's a sample.
You know, cause we have Terry, we talked about. Uh, we've got Kayden Doral that comes from Watertown, he's closer usually to twenty, but he's in our reserve program, so he's coming down and doing, doing his hours, you know, working on shift and then he's coming back and then doing our reserve program as well.
I think we kind of, sorry, just, but even. I mean, right now, kind of the thing is, like, say, for correctional officers, after their, you know, starting wage for six months, they're getting a three percent increase with what we proposed, they're only getting seventeen cents.
Cause they, cause they have a higher starting, starting wage. And what ends up happening though is that at a higher starting wage, as soon as you get to that, that year mark, it affects you, it affects you even greater. So they're gonna be, they're gonna be way ahead after a year, we're G C R looking under dispatch. They're gonna be at seventeen.
Yeah, I'm.
Seventeen, or seventeen, seventeen versus three years now. And they're.
Fifteen what, fifteen fifty one?
Fifteen, there's one, I was saying, the longevity thing is, percentage is not like, you know, fifty cents, twenty five.
Yeah, but I think, you think you work that, that, dollars and make that issue. And if we started this in, in October, like I said, we would ultimately still be significantly under budget for that as well.
Well, even if you factor in twenty percent fringe, which I think you're under that, you're still gonna be good for a little while. It'll catch up to you eventually, but hopefully the revenue will, will increase as well. If it helps to attract and retain staff, Tyler, I'm all on board for what you presented.
You guys want time to look at this and then maybe we'll come back next Tuesday and, you know, okay? All right.
Before you leave, we've got another subject.
Yeah, I saw the, Mark, that's you, I guess.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Do you have any idea what this is about and you heard something about it or?
Do you need an executive or?
Yeah, that's.
I feel, I don't know. Motion for executive session to discuss personnel by example. Second. Second by Johnson, in all favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All right, motion carries.
I was gonna have an early day, but oh, I. Never works out. Never works out.
Yeah, when you said you were gonna have an early one, it was, it was work out.
Do you have any questions?
You know, I probably should, if I can, to add.
Okay, yeah, I probably should add.
We put cocktails on there, we said, well, gee, we should all try that. Sure. Ended up getting a Uber to take us over there.
Okay.
And, uh, I think we have one drink the whole time we were there.
Well, that's right.
Yeah. So we'll be going back sometime.
Sure. It's, I mean, it's been there forever, I understand you.
Yeah, it's an older building, first time we have been there. But, they sure did a good job.
Yeah, there was one up here at the, I really asked about it the other day, it's one of the tribal, you know, it's, uh, is it a Queen tribute band or something like that?
Look, Cherry.
Oh, yeah.
We're gonna be.
I saw that man, I'm telling you, this was a Queen tribute.
Queen tribute?
Yeah. Yeah, I'm scared for Queens, I watched that movie, you ever see that movie?
Yeah, I saw bits in V C S, I haven't seen the whole thing.
Yeah, it was pretty good.
Saw a little bit of it the other night, actually, sitting in a bar, Freddie Mercury.
Yeah, yeah, I liked it, and a lot better than I did before I saw the movie. See that, it's a big team of time.
Can you plan on meeting with that Nita up there with us soon too to answer some going questions?
Oh, sure.
Thank you.
Love going out there.
Thank you.
In there before.
I see, I, I have one of those ones on.
Okay. Don't talk about somebody else. Yeah, now we'll need to print the battery.
All right, we'll need a motion to approve the contract labor on Janissa. Motion by Johnson, you want to name an amount? Want to name an amount in your motion? You want to name an amount in your motion?
Twenty-five dollars per hour. With no benefits.
And there's a second by Regal. Is there any discussion on that? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those saying no, motion carries. Is there a motion to pay the bills? Example, is there a second to that one?
Carlson, more enthusiastic, pay the bills.
All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Claims are paid. What else do you have for us? Motion to adjourn?
I want, oh, I'm thinking of Tyler, cause I like it. How many employees are we gonna get out of this scenario? How many?
Dispatch, nothing.
Nope.
She does nothing.
Yeah.
Reduced you from.
How many, what do you say we got, we're gonna have ten, four, I thought they were a half-staff basis.
Did change, the usual, the last week they talked about going these twelve hour shifts, they figured they could get by with less people. So I think full staff is gonna be sixteen.
Right, versus, versus twenty-two.
But how many do we have now?
Uh, I think we have, you know.
Yeah, ten, ten, nine, ten.
Ten, ten, ten plus four part-timers.
Four, four, six, it's gonna be, yeah, six.
Yeah, but.
Under, under, under per.
Right. But I think these numbers here would reflect that increase to sixteen, that's what he said, yeah. I take issue with, I have a problem with, well, I mean, you need to look at the numbers like, like you pointed out. The, the starting pay is one thing and then the six month increase and then the one year increase, you put that back into dollars, that's not representative. I, I don't, not sure I like that three, five and seven year deal. I think they should fall back into the normal rotation of things, whatever that is for longevity.
That is the normal.
Okay, but then also for just pay increases. We, we, we.
Well, I think for increasing this unpredicted, definitely there will be, this will be longevity. You don't put that on.
Well, what's he suggesting here?
That, no, that includes longevity.
This is longevity.
Just longevity and, and annual increases, right?
Well, which we don't know.
There won't.
Right, so if, if, I guess if you took off this longevity, you just got annual increases, that would do the deputies, right? Or people the other way.
No, they just get, they're, they're on scale, they're gonna get so much.
And that's just annual increases every year after that.
Or whatever, but it was on.
Yeah, we need a longevity. Would we not do the same thing here?
Yeah, that's right.
And then you're treating that group of people different than the rest of.
But these is a whole department.
Well, we, well, we already are, you're, you're the deputies, they're not getting.
Well, so we, I, I guess it's, you know, we need to go back.
We need to do it again. So they, you have to care that return, it's not thirteen and a half percent, these numbers don't, no.
No, no, I was using twenty percent, Don said thirty would probably be closer.
Well, you, you know, say, if we have the program. Well, you, you know, say, if we have to prevent, how many more health insurance are, are, or what curriculums?
But wasn't this super minded, just what he does, it's really, it's benefits in the that we are.
So, what happens?
We didn't budget the room, we just have a.
Yeah, I know either, I'm just saying, I can see what's all in this.
Salary budget, and then the benefits, the, the, a lot of, it's a line item?
Yeah, they're all off on the top part of the budget.
Yeah, so that, that's, so we just take that.
Yeah. I can work through whatever.
Like, dispatch, in year, after one year.
I think that's what he's using.
Seven dollars, and we're, well, social security measure, that's under forty thousand dollars, so a hundred fifty thousand dollars, upside down. That put one here, and if there's any gonna work, generally, okay?
But here he's got jail salaries.
Well, there's, you know, the sheriff department has like five budgets, so that's what we're gonna have to go through and, and look at it.
Budget, I mean.
But I guess, but my point is that the, the social security, the, uh, the workman's comp, and all this stuff is a separate line item. There's just a, a line item for jail salary, that's one that he should have plugged in here, and that's what I'm comparing to.
That's what I'm comparing.
Right, just, just the salary.
Yeah, the salary, but then we're gonna.
That would increase social, social security as well.
Yeah, 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 sure, yeah. But the line here, but to me, it's just that difference to be the, you know, social security on that two-dollar increase or.
Social security, plus, it's going to be more for retirement.
Right, but just on, just on that small portion, so you're not talking about a terrible big amount of money.
Well, I think we have to go through.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying, I see all of the, all the things that the effect that I'm doing, it's not doing, they're not, so it's pretty, it's after retirement.
Okay.
And all of a sudden, I mean, yeah, I, I.
I, I don't wanna end up upside down in, in a year.
Well, no, I, I, I'll be honest, when, prior to coming in and seeing this, I was like, no can do. But when he starts doing this, and I say, we gotta watch, because some things accidentally get left out.
But then, but then.
And then I just assumed that by Venus will have zero overtime.
Yeah, we know that's not gonna happen, yeah.
Now, I'm being, I agree that for your overtime hours, plus.
Yeah, but, but you're still, I mean, if, if his numbers are, are all close, I mean, there should be budget savings here.
If you have twelve hour, twelve-hour shift.
You got four hours.
Okay, so, so you were.
Eight hours overtime every week, yeah, every week.
That's automatic overtime.
Yeah, they, they, they were three days one week and four the next, without we had to do it.
Four and three, yeah, four days.
Yeah, overtime.
Yeah, oh yeah, then definitely eight hours overtime.
They got a higher rate of pay.
Yeah, anything, anything over forty hours.
But again, I assume that that was plugged into the numbers here.
No, this is just.
The overtime that you mentioned?
This is two thousand, maybe hours, except for the nurse, which is thirty.
Well, yeah, we know that's not all that, so.
That's what I'm saying, there's a lot more to it. I've got a void plate.
Right, yeah, we gotta move the numbers.
I want some more numbers that conclude.
But you also have to look at your current wage schedule and see that one, one line item is two dollars and seven cents more an hour, and one is a dollar ninety-nine, which is two bucks, and the other one's a dollar seventy-four cents more, so. I'm just, I'm just throwing it out there.
Well.
No, I shouldn't, I know, I don't, I'm supposed to do something, I don't see for it on board, detail numbers of what's, I don't even, I'm gonna call you next week, yeah, you just wait this, thinking, I meant before you go get part of them again, a couple bucks.
Thank you.
Yeah, I honestly don't know if this is gonna enable you to hire any more people, there, there's just nobody up there that wants to do it.
I know, I'm second that motion right now, they ain't gonna hire more people.
Nobody wants to work.
Have you looked in the belly papper?
Yeah, holy cow, yeah, yeah.
The helping paper. Oh, that is way better than what we're paying.
Uh, until there's less money, free money given, you know, way.
Yeah, I, I still don't think that's the issue, I, I, I just don't, I mean, that, it's all done the other month. And so much that got sent back already, I thought, but I, I'm sure that's something, but I just think it's a bigger problem.
People have to live somehow.
Well, they sent it back in July, has did, has did thirty other dates, so, I mean, that night, I, I think that's part of the issue, but there's something bigger going on that, that is, I see, yes.
You look at the number of, for example, the number of individuals, teachers who haven't retired, you know, they've seen you go to COVID, they just sort of, I'm, I'm, I like them, they're not even tired, they're not like a lot, they're just, yeah.
And I did see that, I don't remember the number that they showed, but among people that normally retire in a year, what if, ten million people is during the COVID, thinking what to, what, thirteen million?
It's everything.
Yeah, everything, yeah, truck drivers, uh, people just sit, well, on all the social security, I'm taking, hell.
I don't think.
Ready to take the vote?
On what?
We have a motion and a second to adjourn. We have, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Sorry.
All right, we're done. Now you can talk about.
You're getting, I'm not.
Okay.
Yeah, thank you very much.
Yeah.
Well, you're gonna win this year, Tom, I just know you're gonna win.
Lucky you made him that promise, he didn't make the promise to me.
I have a bridge over there outside, too.
Look, see, for, you were, you were looking for a winterizer fertilizer, huh?
Yeah.
I saw on sale, uh, my boss, in fact, Runny's got it on sale, fifty thousand square foot bags, they're normally like twenty-three bucks, they're on sale for nineteen or something.
That's a good deal, that's a real deal.
Yeah, actually, I think it was, I think last year I paid, I got the sale price on some, I bought some others, they're like twenty-five bucks a bag, so, yeah, pretty good size, stuff I've been using last few years.
God, it's Scott's.
I'm not sure what it is, not Scott's brand, but.
Yeah, I think they made.
It's a Ma- Max, something like that.
Yeah, but I think that's me, my Scott's.
It could well be, yeah.
I've used that before.
Yeah, I've been using it for quite a while, I've worked for a while, I've used it. I bought a, what, twenty bag, and put it on. I had to take the new bag, yeah.
Did you buy it early, or are you boys on?
I got more pair.
No, he knows, don't let your pair. My pair, he's got it.
Still liking your job?
Still what?
No.
This livestream is brought to you by Dakota Pond and Thrift, for all your pond needs, countryside aid, assisted living, and memory care. In Rosalt, where your family is our family. First Savings Bank of Sisseton, to use our online banking to save you time. Stilson Service in Sisseton with Marathon Fuels. Tri-State Water in Sisseton, for all your water needs. Water softeners and reverse osmosis, right here in Sisseton. And of course, the Sisseton Courier, where we do more than the weekly newspaper. Thanks for watching, and have a great day.